One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk take the roll please.
Here, bro.
Here.
District one more set?
Here.
Two O'Connell, three Rodamacher.
Here.
Four Wyland.
Here.
Five O'Malley.
Here.
Six Burchill.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Is there anyone that would like to address the council at this point? Anyone? Could I ask one more time? Anyone? Okay, let's go to the consent agenda and Madam Clerk will verbalize those items for us.
To approve the regular meeting minutes and close session minutes of February 20th, 2008, and the special meeting minutes of February 14th and February 20th, 2008. To approve claims for payments in the amount of nine million, three hundred seven, three hundred sixty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance of five regular operators licenses for the period March 4th, 2008 through June 30th, 2009. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request.
Would you please pull that one?
Mm-hmm. To place on file the quarterly report and the annual report of the library director and the community access board minutes of February 26th, 2008.
What is your pleasure on the consent?
Move to approve.
Or second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Burchill?
Yes.
Rodamacher?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Which one did you take off? I'm sorry.
Operator's license.
Did you have some comment on it?
Oh, I recuse myself from that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Let's go to Plan Commission, or Plan Commission, Finance Committee, excuse me. Applications for operators license, everything in order, and Finance Committee is making a recommendation of the council for approval. Which one?
We just voted on that.
That was a consent.
Geez, where am I? Lake Maloo, lower power dam maintenance issues. Good thing I only got two meetings left. [laughter]
We postponed that.
Yep, that's going to be postponed because Finance is working on that with the, I think with Buck Malik and the rest of the intergovernmental group. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. The next one is approval for Finance Officer to attend GFOA conference in June. Recommendation is to approve. Monies are in the budget.
So vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Let's go to whole business. Consider and take action on amending the joint library building advisory referendum documents resolution number two dash zero eight. Catherine, you have some comments on that?
Uh, yes. It was brought to our attention by a resident of the town of Hudson that he had some questions about the number put into the referendum question and the explanatory statement. The way it was worded in the ballot question is the amount, the tax per hundred thousand for the amount attributable to the new joint library. He was concerned that it doesn't reflect what will be the total tax, including the present cost of operating the existing library. So he may want to explain that when he gets to that.
Yeah, I did talk to Marion Shaw this afternoon and she made some good points. And Marion, maybe you want to make those points at this particular time if you'd like?
Sure. Let me find.
I did say to Marion that at least we're a little more exclamatory than the other government agencies because they didn't put a cost in there at all. But anyway, Marion, why don't you bring up your items that you mentioned?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. The reason for my phone calls and why I'm up here today is because I have a concern of what has taken place in the very short time that it's come about. It seems like it's been rushed through and I think there has been something done that I think we just need to revisit as a group. And here's my concern. This notice was put out, it was posted in the newspaper, and this referendum question has been approved by your council, as I understand. And I would like to just read it for the record. Notice is hereby given that an election to be held in the city of Hudson on Tuesday, April 1st, 2008. The following question will be submitted to a vote of the people. And that question is the referendum, advisory referendum on joint public library building. The question on the ballot, should the city of Hudson, village of North Hudson, and towns of Hudson and St. Joseph use public funds to jointly pay for acquiring, developing, and operating a new joint library building to be located at 700 First Street, Hudson, Wisconsin, and an approximate annual average tax of $24 per 100,000 of assessed valuation? Assessed, estimate is based on half the building cost being paid for by philanthropic and private donations. A copy of the entire text of the resolution directing the submission can be directed from the city clerk. Here is my concern with that statement, that ballot question as it is posed, exactly the way it is posed. I did my math on a $300,000 house. This assumes, according to that statement, that it's $24 per 100,000. So that would be a cost on a $300,000 house of $72. What my assumption is from that question is that the increased cost to me is only going to be $16.50, which is an incorrect statement. And the reason why it's incorrect is because I am reading the ballot question as it is written. It says we are going to acquire, develop, and operate that new joint library for $24 per 100,000 dollars. In essence, there's already an existing tax on the taxpayers for operation of that at eighteen and a half cents per thousand of valuation. So that $300,000 house is already paying 5550. So the total there being $127.50, which means that if I walk in, punch that ballot question, my assumption is I'm getting a $16.50 increase in tax when in reality, we missed it completely by 77 percent. Now, I did the math on my particular situation. In the town, we get taxed the same eighteen and a half cents per thousand, same $24. It would be $136 a year. But if I did live in the city and I punched that ballot question, my assumption would be that I'm, it's only going to cost 72. And that is incorrect. And if we look at this question any number of ways, you can only come up with one conclusion. The problem is that this question, because the city of Hudson posed it as part of the ballot question rather than in the explanatory statement, I don't believe there's a correction at this point. Because that question has been published in the newspaper, it's been distributed around town, it's been talked about, and at this point, there is nobody that can convince me that 100 percent of the people that walk up and punch that ballot on April 1st are going to get a chance to see the explanatory statement, even if it is revised. The very fact that the council is revisiting this issue tonight, to me, illustrates that there could be a problem. And my suggestion is to err on the side of caution because if you ask a question that is invalid on its face, you will get an invalid response on its face. And what are you going to do with the conclusions to a question that was answered because of the way it was worded? And the best example of that is a very old cliche, and that is, when was the last time you beat your wife? You can't get a good answer when you ask a question like that.
Well, we're looking for a solution rather than the criticism.
The, I understand.
Well, I understand also. The way I understand it, it should be the average cost of $24 per 100,000 of assessed valuation in addition to the current taxpayer cost of eighteen and a half for 100,000.
That is correct.
Eighteen seventy-two.
Eighteen seventy-two, excuse me.
The question was phrased as the cost attributable to acquiring, developing, and operating the new joint library. So that's the problem. The city council obviously wanted to give as much information to the voter as it could to make this decision. And I agree that we probably can't change the ballot question. I think the ballot question is accurate as it stands. We can't control everyone's underlying assumptions. I'm, but what we, the city can do, because it hasn't been published and this will be posted in the polling place, is change the explanatory statement to provide an additional sentence explaining the 24 per 100,000.
Yeah.
And remember, I mean, you've got to keep it in perspective. It's an advisory referendum. This is an opportunity you are giving to your voters, which you don't have to do to your residents, to get input. And so what it is, is input. It's not binding on the council. It's a step you chose to take to help you decide whether to even go further along in this process.
It'll be interesting to find out what you tell your group tomorrow night at the township because there's nothing there.
Right, and, and-
And I'm not being critical again.
Right, for their case, see, I see that as an easier solution to the issue because it is in the explanatory-
Well, there's a lot of smoke and mirrors there.
Yes, but because it's in the explanatory, it isn't expressly written as the ballot question.
That's true.
And so that's why I think as far as the question goes, they are in a better position under this circumstance.
Well, I disagree with that because if you go out and say, does everybody want a new library? Of course they do. Does everybody want a new library? It's going to cost you this? That's a little different question. So I disagree that we're in a better position than what the other government agencies are.
Are we somewhat accurate in saying that the cost of the new library will be roughly $24 per 100,000 dollars of assessed value?
That's the-
Over and above what we're paying right now?
No, that part is accurate. Over and above what we're paying right now. And that was the assumption that the council made, that this is the number that's going to be added to your taxes, estimate.
So what we're saying here is that if you, we build this new library at this location, we're estimating it's going to cost $24 per 100,000 dollars as an increase in your taxes.
Right.
That's what that's saying. You're correct in saying, yeah, right now we're paying eighteen dollars and 72 cents per 100,000.
But we didn't say that in addition to.
Right, it's in the addition to, which is my concern because we're, when I figure out the tax, the way I read the question, it's a swing on a $300,000 house from 127.50 to $16.50 additional.
Well, we appreciate-
The total cost versus additional. And neither, the real cost would be 127.50, but the way the statement, the way the question or the ballot question reads is even with a revised explanatory statement, the question still reads that I should take away from it for the total operating and the acquisition and upgrading that facility, that I would only add 16.50 to my tax. And I think that's my point, is that it is advisory, yes. The problem is, and I wasn't being sarcastic before, if it came across that way.
No.
My point was that, that if you have an invalid question, you're going to get an invalid response.
Right.
And that was the illustration I was trying to make. So even if it's advisory, so if it comes back 70 percent in favor, maybe those 70 percent think they're only going to see a $16.50 swing. So how does the council weigh that information?
Well, we have to go by the suggestion that Catherine just made a few minutes ago.
Well, it will be in the explanatory statement, and I think if you read the question, I think it's just, I mean, this is speculation. We don't know what people assume. But if you put in the total cost, they might have thought that that's how much it's going to cost in addition to what I'm paying now. And that would be equally invalid. So this, the way the question is phrased, it says operating a new joint library, that is the cost attributable to this new project. The question is the question. The city will, I mean, if the council adopts the resolution tonight with the explanatory statement, that will be up on the website. It will be in the polling place. The purpose of the explanatory statement is so that if any voter has any kind of a question when they come to the polling place, the poll workers are not allowed, understandably, to explain anything, but they can point to the explanatory statement, which will be posted. And that, that should answer at least that question regarding the cost, if that question should arise.
I think we're both right here. I mean, I think what we're saying is, if you have a $300,000 home, your taxes are going to go up $72. And what Marion's saying is correct too. We need to have more explanation, what's the total cost.
Well, I think if we take Catherine's suggestion, that's the best thing we can do right now because we certainly were not in a position, we weren't trying to snow anybody, that this was the only cost. And that was paramount, paramount to our objective of putting some dollars in there. And had we joined the other government agencies, I think we would have been in a bigger problem than we are right now.
Agreed.
But we appreciate your comments, Marion. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
And now let's, need a motion to suspend, suspend the rules first, and then we'll take up the change in the explanatory.
Move to suspend the rules.
Or second?
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. Now, need a motion to change the exclamatory portion of the resolution. Er.
Move to adopt resolution number two dash oh eight with, and I'd like a discussion on this point, with the proposed change to the explanatory statement.
I'll second that.
Here's my proposed change. In the very last paragraph, we say the agreement would address the acquisition, et cetera, ownership of any land and buildings. It's not any land and buildings, it's this land and building.
Right.
And I think we ought to say that because otherwise, someone might construe that to mean, gee, we're kind of writing a blank check then if they're going to go buy some other land and buildings. We're not. If, should this all come to pass-
Specifically that piece of property.
It's 700 First Street-
Right.
-in Hudson. And I think we ought to say that.
Yeah, I agree.
Agreed.
I also wonder if we shouldn't, where you have this last paragraph, or second to last paragraph amended, if we should have a, for total cost, just put the math together in there of, what was that?
Forty-two seventy-two.
Forty-two seventy-two, an estimated forty-two seventy-two per 100,000 of assessed valuation.
Yeah.
Or if you should just take that extra step to-
Or do you want to keep it consistent? Well, no, that would be consistent per 100,000.
So total annual average tax of-
Twenty-four per 100,000 of assessed and then the eighteen seventy-two per 100,000 again. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion or comments? Yes?
I guess what I'd like to do, and I'm not sure what-
Could you tell us who you are, please?
Okay, my name is Chris Kilber. I live at 45 Heritage Boulevard. With what these changes are, I'd like to see, have a couple days to be able to look at exactly what that is. We've been tossing around these ideas.
Who wants to look at it?
What's that?
Who wants to look at it?
I guess I would.
Well, you can look at it at your pleasure, but we don't have another meeting before the election.
Okay, then what's the protocol if I find that these actions are, I guess, illegal or, in that, in that they're questionable?
What would be illegal about it?
I guess I'll rephrase the question. What would I have to do if I were to find that what the council is doing is, I guess, not, not appropriate to be able to do what they're doing?
You'd probably have to find yourself a lawyer and make some action against us. But we are representing the people of our particular district and we're going to have to take action to hopefully get this message across before the election, and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay, okay. And just be prepared, I do, I do have that. Thank you.
Fine, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried unanimously. Whole business, or new business, DOT presentation by Thomas Beekman regarding the feasibility of reopening the former exit two off-ramp on I-94 currently at Crutchfield Drive and Dominion Drive. Denny?
I'd like to have the opportunity to introduce Mr. Thomas Beekman and Mr. Jim Kunning from the Wisconsin DOT District Six office in Eau Claire. They're both here tonight to discuss the possibility and issues of the potential reopening of exit, the old former exit two, which we may consider exit one B at this time if it ever be approved.
One B, you say?
One B.
One B?
Not two B, one B.
To be one B.
Glad I can at this time introduce Mr. Thomas Beekman.
Just for background, my role with Wisconsin DOT is the Northwest Regional Planning Chief out of the Eau Claire office. Our Northwest region encompasses about one-third of the state, 20 counties, from Tremblow, Wisconsin, up to Superior, over to Abbotsford, and over here to the Twin Cities. For many years, we were a smaller district office with, with about eight counties, and we had a recent reorganization that put us into five regions. So we cover quite a large area, but this area, this specific segment of roadway is very well-known to us out of the Eau Claire office. And before we get into the details of this study, to give you a little more background on this specific piece of highway, I'll make no bones about it, asking for access onto the interstate system is one of the biggest requests that can be made, not just of a state DOT, but of the Federal Highway Administration. This request to add access or alter access on the, the interstate system goes all the way up through the federal highways for approval. In some cases, it goes as high as Washington DC. So it is a very, very significant question being posed to both the state and federal Departments of Transportation. To put this, to kind of heighten that, this specific piece of the interstate is the second most significant piece of interstate in the state of Wisconsin. It has the second highest traffic volume, second only to the connection between Milwaukee and Chicago. It is higher than the section between Madison and Beloit and Rockford and any other state crossing that we have. In terms of growth potential, it probably has the highest growth potential, greater than that between Milwaukee and Chicago, in terms of the demographics of 15 million person metropolitan area, the Twin Cities, the nature of the river crossing, which funnels people through this crossing. You don't have alternative routes. And then the, the development opportunities for commuters who work in the Twin Cities area to populate west, the western part of Wisconsin. Nothing you're not aware of, St. Croix County's been one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation for any number of years. So I just setting that background to kind of give you a sense of the magnitude of the question that's being asked. It can seem very innocuous. Can we get an access point? But it is, it's a pretty significant question on a very, on the second most significant piece of highway that we have in the state of Wisconsin. In order to get an access point approved, there is a federal highway interchange policy in, in our bureaucratic ease. Basically what it's saying, in order to have an access, you've got to show that there's no other alternative. You have to prove that there's a problem, and that problem has no other, no other alternative than the one that is being requested. There are eight things, eight criteria in the interchange policy. You have to show how every one of these items has been met or exceeded. In order, the first step in getting an access is what we call an interchange justification report. And you have to go through all the operational analysis and the modeling necessary to, A, identify what your problem is, and then make a correlation between the solution and that problem, and how that solution meets these eight criteria. Number one, the existing interchanges and our local roads and streets in the corridor can neither provide the necessary access nor be improved to satisfactorily accommodate the design year traffic demands while at the same time providing the access intended by the proposal. Basically, this is a modeling exercise where you have to identify how the, how your existing system cannot function. What is broke? And then make the correlation between how this access improves it. But this is the first thing, you need to show how the existing system cannot work. Number two, all reasonable alternatives for design options, location, and transportation system management type improvements have to be shown that they've been assessed and provided for, if currently justified, or provisions are included. In this situation where you're at, this like ramp metering mass transit HOV facilities, this means you have to take a look at your existing system and make sure that there are other solutions other than a geometric change, an actual addition to the access, which could also alleviate the problem. There are two ways to solve the problem. One is, we'll build something new or we'll better manage the system that we have. Ramp metering, mass transit, HOV facilities, HOV is high occupancy vehicle lanes, dedicated lanes for through traffic. So that's basically doing things to massage your existing system to work better. So you have to also show how none of those will, will work as an alternative solution. Number three, this is a big one. The proposed access point does not have a significant adverse impact on the safety and operation of the interstate facility based on analysis of current and future traffic. And I won't get reading the rest of it, but basically, you have to show how the addition of this access will not impede the operations and safety on the interstate system itself. Again, that's a, that, this is, this is the one that's probably looked at very, very critically by both the federal highways and the Wisconsin DOT. Next one. Number four, the proposed access connects to a public road only and will provide for all traffic movements. Less than full interchanges will be considered on a case-by-case basis. Again, I won't read the rest of it. Very important here, adding new accesses are expected to be fully functioning interchanges. So anything less than a diamond interchange like you have at Carmichael, a cloverleaf like we have at 35 and the interstate, or the one we have down here at 35 North and the interstate, those allow for all movements. You can get on, off, in any direction you choose. If you're asking for an access to the interstate does not provide all those movements, you have, you have to have a reason why only that one movement. And this gets you sort of back into that first question and, so going in with a one ramp, slip ramp addition, you're already one strike against you because it's not a full functioning interchange. Number five, this basically says you've got to make sure it matches any comprehensive plans that you have in the county, you have in the town, you have in the city, just so it's compatible. It expects that there's a long-range vision that you're tying this to in terms of how this fits into that vision. Pretty basic. Number six, in areas where potential exists for future multiple interchanges, we have to look at the whole thing as a comprehensive network. Now, there are no additional interchanges we would expect to add in this whole area. We're, we had not, we don't have plans to add this one. So while this talks about new, or because you have Carmichael, 35, LaBons, and 35, and the one on the Minnesota side, and we already know that we've got operational concerns on the main line managing that traffic in and off and between those interchanges, you have to look at any single interchange in context of the whole system. So this model would have to look at, if you do anything here, will it impact the two interchanges that way? And will it take the next, probably as far as the, for sure, LaBons, the Highway 12 interchange, but perhaps as far as the 65 interchange? It has to look at them all as a network. And somebody says, well, why in the world would you worry about something that far down the road? What they're looking at is diverted traffic. You may expect to put this ramp in to solve an issue that's very close to the proximity of that ramp, say Carmichael congestion. But in turn, it ends up drawing a bunch of people who are going to use it as a shortcut to get down to River Falls rather than going up to 35. who are going to use it as a shortcut to get down to River Falls rather than going up to 35. Again, that's just a what-if. That's what they're looking for. Does it create some other subsidiary impacts? Seven, the request for a newer revised access generated by newer expanded development, this basically is if General Motors was going to drop a major, like the $3.6 billion defense contract that was put to Grumman here just yesterday, and they're planning on dropping a brand-new plant down in Alabama. Say that would have happened in Hudson. That's what this is talking about. Your link, and for what you're doing, you may have to look at some business areas over here and show how your business development in that area is tied to this. Number eight, this basically says, anything that you do in order to get the justification, you have to go through the entire environmental process, which is NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, Section 106, which is historical. For any of those of you who have been following the blow-by-blow on the Stillwater, you know what sort of a process that can be. I wouldn't put this in the context of a Stillwater, but still, it's fairly significant. So that's the eight points, very briefly trying to explain to you. We're not here to tell you yes or no. It's your, it's kind of the ball is in the court of the local unit of government to be able to put together the information necessary to justify that. We're trying to lay out some of the questions that you have to be aware that you'd have to answer, and the justifications you would have to have. When DOT looks at this one, just some very quick things that came to us from a desktop analysis without any modeling, and this was in the letter that we sent back to the council. Number one, for instance, we said, whether the ramp proposal even remains a legitimate design option within the current design standards for FHWA and WISDOT on the interstate, that goes back to the IGR criteria, number four, number one. Single-direction slip ramps have been taken off the interstate system. You run the risk, if you embark on a request for this off-ramp, of opening up the whole system. The off-ramp, the on-ramp currently that you have on the opposite side of the road was marked for removal as part of the Carmichael Road interchange when that was added back in the early 90s. We've simply been monitoring that. We have not executed any action to remove that since we're not having any operational problems. But that would be brought back into the mix to look at the whole thing. We have been, the reason that was flagged is because single on-ramps or single off-ramps are not desirable on the interstate system. They're not an expected means by which traffic gets on or off, and they pose safety and operational problems.
That's the whole reason you're taking slip ramps out of the system?
No, the single off-ramps, those single slip ramps. There's other reasons.
At a state or federal level?
Yeah.
Both?
Both. Well, the states manage the interstate system. The feds don't independently manage it. We manage it for them, and so there are federal guidelines that we implement.
So is Wisconsin the only state taking those one-access slip ramps off?
No, that's been attacked nationwide. There are certain situations where perhaps you have no other option, or there are other unique, high-bred freeway systems in an urban area. You may drive, and myself, I've been in Austin, Texas, and San Antonio, and they've got some of these things where you go whipping off, and you can come whipping on. You know, they're fairly dangerous maneuvers, but they don't, they're...
But I guess the question is, there still are states that have those one-slip ramp exits?
We've got one right out here.
Oh, right.
Yep.
So...
Yep. Adding them is a different situation as opposed as to when do you take them off? I'm just making reference to the fact that the one that's already out there had been marked when we put the Carmichael interchange for removal, when the other one got removed because of the single ramp tying into a collector road system.
We're just putting it back.
But they're removed for a reason. Again, they used to be called suicide. Some of them were called suicide connections.
They're removed for a reason, but then you're saying most states, it's an option? Or is it a standard by the federal government to keep, to remove?
A single off-ramp tying into a collector road like this is not in the design standard book for federal highways or state DOT.
Thank you.
Well, Tom, wasn't the original portion of removing that was the backup of traffic onto 94 because of that extreme stop sign that went on to direct traffic at Crestview? Wasn't that part of it?
That's part of it. I mean, tying, that's part of the reasons why the single ramp coming off onto what we call a collector road, because you're bringing them into a rather immediate interaction with that side road, you end up with these traffic impacts. And actually, we'll touch on that in the next bullet, because that's one of the concerns that we would offer to the locals in terms of, here's a perceived benefit you might get. There are also some things that we saw in terms of negatives to your system. For instance, I'll go through the first bullet, like even if you could overcome the hurdle in the first bullet.
Yeah.
And federal highways and WISDOT says, "Well, even contemplate adding that design feature to our interstate system." Say you could overcome that. You then have to show how that design doesn't pose operational problems to the local system or the state system.
Yeah.
Both. That's criteria one, two, three, and eight that we went over before. The first sub-bullet, for instance, one of your first problems is you're going to have overlap with existing merged, diverged, deceleration, acceleration vehicles using the exit ramps at one and two already. So you're already in a substandard condition because the amount of merging and deceleration time that we built into the Carmichael ramp, as well as the acceleration lane coming off into the third lane coming up the hill, are all built to those certain standards. You put a ramp in the middle, you're now into the deceleration part of the Carmichael Road, and you're into the acceleration part of the 35. And what you end up getting is this going on, which is the danger situation. So that's the first thing that we look at, that even if you could get justification to do a design type that we don't do anymore, then you have to show how that design type would not create safety or operational problems at that location. This is the first one that we would look at and say, it's already overlapping the safe zones of the other two interchanges. Second bullet, intersection design that would allow safe and efficient traffic operations when trying to connect high-speed off-ramp with a local road at a non-interchange location. You sent us a draft of a roundabout that goes off, and that's a pretty, what they had designed, fitting a roundabout in there isn't the issue, and getting something to physically connect isn't the issue. It's doing it in a safe manner. I think that design that was sent to us was suggesting like a 25 mile-an-hour speed, a 25 mile-an-hour curve. That would not be considered acceptable. We're removing those kind of curves. We redid the Baldwin interchange, for instance. We're redoing the 65 interchange, because as you came off those on-ramps, you came up, there was a right-hand little swerve, and you went up. We kept dumping vehicles off that curve, and we removed those. The largest place where we have safety and crash issues on the interstate system is at the off-ramp locations. That's where we have our safety issues. People are getting off and are not paying attention, and they're flying off those ramps, or they're trying to get off and trying to come back on. That's where the majority of our crashes do occur on the interstate system, is on those off-ramp locations. So getting off in that short distance, making that right-hand turn, that has a lot of issues with it. Let's put it that way.
Do you have those numbers to back that up?
Which numbers?
For off instead of on? It's more of a safety for getting off?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
That'd be interesting, because we certainly do have a lot of accidents on the on, so getting on.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just, we did, when we did our...
I'd just like to see the percentage.
Sure, sure. On our recent study, when we were doing our two interchanges on 65, and then we were looking at the 63 one, again, that's where we've had our issues on the interstate system on this segment with, is the highest crash locations. They may not be the most severe. Obviously, our most severe are people crossing the center, crossing the median, which ends up with a high rate of fatality and severe injury, just total volume of crashes. Problem with that is, is that people think, "Well, they're not major accidents. Nobody's getting hurt. No, big deal." What they create is an incident management issue on our system. Anytime that we have to get a tow truck out there, or the law enforcement has to get out there, then we're blocking off that ramp, we're blocking off the merge, and we have what we call secondary impacts. This corridor right now with the high volume of traffic, we are very, very sensitive to that. We do everything in our power, if there is an incident, to get it off, get it out of the way. We have detour routes set up all up and down the interstate system so we can block the ramps, get people off, keep the traffic moving. We don't have a very good system in Hudson because of the proximity of the river and the lack of a parallel system. So trying to get people to alternative exits and around the thing creates a whole series of other incident possibilities for crashes.
I think one of the main reasons we asked to have some explanation on that is, when that was an off-ramp, there was a very abrupt turn as you got off of 94, and there was a stop sign immediately there, which did cause some of the backup onto 94. But since then, we changed Crestview extensively, and the state gave us quite a piece of land between Crestview and 94, which we thought that would handle the backup of traffic that normally would, in the old system, would be on 94. I don't know if you've looked at that particular change, and maybe you can comment on that. But that was the biggest reason we asked for...
Yeah, there is a change there, but still, even that short, that once you get off, even to start the deceleration, you're overlapping. We added that third lane coming up the hill, and so we got a dedicated acceleration lane coming up.
True.
So we would be moving traffic across that lane into a new deceleration lane.
At a high speed.
That's the one added weave movement that we would have. If you could even overcome that and get them off a deceleration, it's still managing that hard right-hand turn. The backups kind of become the third issue.
Secondary?
That we'd be looking at. Now you've got to look at it and say, nobody's going to have a safety or operational problem with the weaves and the deceleration moving back and forth. We're not going to have a crash problem because we're putting a 25 mile-an-hour curve. If you can overcome and show that that's not a problem, then we have to show that there's going to be no backup situations onto the interstate.
Does the council have any comments?
Have a...
Questions, I mean?
Yeah. Do you think Carmichael interchange is adequate? And the traffic flow currently?
For which system?
North, north-south, coming off the freeway and going north-south.
It's, we have no operational problems on the interstate system with Carmichael Road.
So, but we have a problem when you come off?
Yes.
And we're trying to get some of the traffic off that road, or do something to... Did you guys have any impact or input into the design of that exit? Or the overpass, or anything like that?
Did we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we did it. Yeah.
Do you think it's too small? I guess would be a better way to put it.
Again, and I'm not trying to be coy when I say "who's system," because those criteria look at, the interstate is serving a certain traffic demographic, the local system is serving other demographic. If the interstate system has no operational issues, and the ramps don't have any operational systems for the traffic that we're using, and are not posing a problem to the interstate system, then the system is working fine from the interstate perspective and the state highway perspective. In terms of then the issues that the locals have, we don't disagree that there are issues out there. We're well aware of those. Making the connection that adding a slip ramp will alleviate those problems is a whole different ballgame. It's a whole different ballgame. And that kind of gets to that last bullet, the last two bullets. Basically, the immediate level of service issue at the proposed ramp is a variety of local trips reroute to make use of additional access. Reroute's the key word. You talked about Carmichael Road, and we didn't, nobody identified what problem were we trying to specifically address in the letter. It was just a general question, what about a ramp?
Yep.
We make the assumption that most people will be focusing on the Carmichael Road, looking for alleviation of the local traffic issues you have on Carmichael and Crestview. There are other people that will use this ramp. It's not just going to be people that say, "Hey, I don't have to shoot down to Carmichael. I can get off here." And therefore, you have just a one-to-one relationship between less traffic here, now they're here. There are people that, who come up and use, right now, 35 North to go into Hudson, up the hill, and to infill, and I'll walk over this map, just these people.
Yep.
They're going to get off, and they're infilling into here.
Right.
They now come up here and say, "Hey, forget that. Let's go up here, and we'll use this."
Right.
It's a combination of trips you might draw back, and this trips that you didn't, that you maybe not expected to come up to here, all of a sudden, you've added a whole different parameter to the number of traffic. Again, that's why you've got to look at the modeling aspects, because you get some unexpected visitors in terms of trying to solve the problem at Carmichael, and you're going to draw a whole different other audience to that roadway. The other thing, and maybe Jim, go to the next slide. We kind of show this laid out. Bring up those ADTs at the local level. They're the daily traffic.
I don't know if you can see that. It's on the very left.
You've got 14,000 down there on 35 North, 14,100. You've got 8,400 coming up and down the hill.
Cooley?
Yep. You've got 11,800 on the west end in the area where the old Dominion intersection is now. You've got 5,300 coming up from the south there on what would be the 11th Street overpass. And you've got 4,000 about five blocks up into the city. Those are pretty beefy. The 8,400 on Cooley Trail is a pretty big number for a city street. And you've got 11,900 down on the Carmichael end. When you look at this, what this is telling us in 30,000 on Carmichael itself, if you look at the 11,800 on the west end of Crestview and the 11,900 on the other end, you realize there's a lot of people who are using the west end as a way to get out of the developments you have off of Carmichael Road. You want to be careful about adding more conflicts on Crestview. Otherwise, that minimizes the opportunity for those people who are using the west end to get out of that area. See what I'm saying? If we had saw there was 2,000 cars on the west end and 12,000 on the east end of Crestview, it would say, maybe if you could, you know, maybe there's, nobody's using it anyway. You've got a 50/50 split. You've got a lot of people trying to get in and out that west end. And so if they're coming from Menards, or coming from Home Depot, they're coming from the area down there, and that's how they're getting out into Hudson proper as opposed to the Carmichael interchange, that's to your benefit. Putting a ramp terminal in the middle of that really puts a lot of that at risk. That's a consequence you have to analyze. Also, we talk about the 14,000 cars going up 35 North, the 8,400 cars going up the hill. How many of those people would just stay on, use the slip ramp, and then use Crestview like a ramp and loop back over the top? Now you're bringing those cars to interact with the 11,800 you already have. And so that's where you go, you know, you've got some system that's working there, so there's a lot of other things that you're going to set some dominos falling on this.
Denny, do we have this information? We do? Okay.
Could I ask, how current are these numbers? Because the map is pretty old.
2006.
Is it, is there, is that target up there, that white?
Yep.
Yeah.
Where's Econo Foods? Is that on there?
I don't know what year the photo is from. I think it's probably from a...
Okay, but the numbers are a year old.
We just used, we had the digital, this is the same photo that's on the background from our 2000, 2001 operational study of this segment. So we certainly aren't trying to sit here, we have not done an engineering analysis. We were trying to kind of give you a desktop analysis of the things that pop up that kind of hit you.
Yeah.
And it sort of gives you a sense of, I'll call them, the hurdles that you have to overcome and remove in order to show that an interchange is a good thing to do, it's a valid thing to do, and then kind of giving you our quick take on some of the major connections that would be looked at between, if you add a ramp there, here's some of the local issues that you may create, local issues.
Well, we appreciate your input, and this throws a little different light on it because we've got everything in one presentation, and everybody has asked their specific questions to what we thought, or maybe we haven't, to a, but we thought, hey, let's pursue that off-ramp and see what happens. Thankfully, you've given us a little more information.
Just as a wild guess, then, so you're suspect, if we just throw some numbers together, exit one B would be probably only 11,000 plus the 8,400, so you'd have about 20,000 people getting off at exit one B?
You wouldn't be the whole 8,400, because you've got some traffic that, you know, is making some local trips.
Yeah.
But there would be some draw of people who would use the slip ramp. Also, obviously, the one... Also, obviously the ones that wouldn't be going up here, but there would be some of this traffic and some of this traffic that would get off in this direction.
So it could be that the, the volume on exit one A and one B could almost be identical based on these numbers.
Critical factors would be peak hour traffic in the afternoon.
Right. Peak hour volumes or the hundredth hour volume or the eightieth hour volumes that we look at and that's where we, you know, if you can, you can, you can exist for twenty-three hours, but you back it up for one hour, that's a failure. In terms of the interstate system.
Oh, you had a question?
Tom, given we have the second highest traffic pattern in the state, in the first, um, potential, you know, growth area of the state on the system, what can we do to improve our, our, uh, area here if we can't open this up?
Well, there are some things that, you know, if, if your problem, if you're trying to focus on is this area right here, in lieu of getting an access, it's getting other ways to get people across. I mean, you don't have a lot of options because you don't have well-developed arterial system in Hudson, that's the nature of the Bluff Land, the nature of Old Town Hudson. It's nobody's fault, it's just the nature of the beast.
Right.
But overpasses in terms of trying to get traffic, other ways to get over here rather than having to go this way, perhaps even looking down in this direction, I'm trying to show between thirty-five and, and, uh, and, and...
Exit four.
And Carmichael.
And that could happen depending on what's gonna happen to the east of Carmichael where you were pointing out there.
This, you know, where Dominion, where Dominion is at, which is in...
Yeah.
This area, no, it's in this area.
Yeah, there you go.
But either here, which goes back through the Farm Fleet, if this becomes, this is already quite a little traffic, finding ways to draw people from here, if that's the way they wanna get across, you gotta figure out how much volume and capacity you've got left here in terms of where they're going.
So you're almost suggesting an overpass more than opening that?
It all depends on what explicit problem you're trying to solve, that's what I'm, if, if your problem is trying to alleviate congestion here, your first solution, the ramp is true, it would draw some people probably off this, so you're heading in the right direction that, make this better by having fewer people there, a ramp would be one way to do that, but there's other issues with the ramp. So what other ways do we have to get traffic, alternate ways to get out of here? Can we get them across?
But you probably have to, have to have some computer models.
Yes.
Uh, as it relates to a specific problem that we've identified or could identify.
This, this becomes a very, a very significant traffic modeling issue in terms of, we did one up in Chautauqua, um, just recently, and that was fairly simplistic because we were, we were talking about main street volumes of five thousand cars a day, side street volumes of eight hundred. This is a very complex network here in terms of the close proximity of the interchanges and the volumes on the interstate. We certainly, again, we're not, we're not telling you no because it would be your opportunity to make the request. It's just an understanding of how much, how much time and effort and level of engineering would go into that interchange justification report.
What's the probability of it being successful?
Going through the normal engineering ways, I'll be honest with you, really slim.
Ten percent or less?
That would be, I wouldn't give you that high.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Plus the bottom line figure.
And then there would be a funding issue in that even if you got that far, it would probably be a hundred percent local cost.
Good.
That's probably the least of your concerns in terms of, you know, you're, you're looking at it from a comprehensive standpoint, I'm trying to alleviate your traffic to let...
So do you have any suggestions for the Carmichael interchange? What we can do to improve the traffic flow at that lane, at that area?
Yeah, another overpass, let's see.
I think we'd have to get together and have maybe some multiple meetings with, you know, staff on staff and, and come up with some ideas. You know, it's something you can't just throw out right now, it's, you know, obviously when you look at all those numbers up there, the biggest one is between Crestview and ramps at Carmichael. Obviously, some of those are getting off and going back onto the interstate, but I have a feeling there's a significant amount that are using it to cross the interstate to get over to the other side and go visit whatever, whether going to their homes or, or Target or something. If there was another way to divert that, you could, you know, obviously reduce the stress on those intersections.
We, we, we certainly have resources available and technology available, we're more, we'd be more than happy and willing to partner with the city of Hudson. We've got the Met Council traffic model adopted to this, to the Wisconsin side of the river, all the way over to the one-twenty-eight interchange. We've got more than intense additional modeling that we've done in this area on the corridor. We would certainly be open to working, you know, with a joint, a joint effort to help model at the local level to, to look at these things.
Very good.
We'd be probably willing to pick most of it up on the DOT dime.
We liked that part.
Just quickly, if an overpass is an option, is that same type of, are we, we're in the same type of, uh, issues here?
That's not, inter, an overpass is not asking, asking for access and the degree to which an overpass minimizes or eliminates, uh, local, locals, the local desire and local action to push for an inter, interchange just to our advantage as well. So, no, that, that, that has none of those other hurdles to overcome.
Other, okay.
So the probability of that would be, obviously...
That would be very high.
Okay.
How about the funding issue?
Funding?
Yeah, would that all be local then?
Um, it depends, you know, if we can show that the additional overpasses reduces future expansion needs on some of the ramps, we can back justify some WISDOT federal funding into that, um...
Another model.
You, you mean?
Yeah, try and figure out what...
But it's all, it's not out of the question. But traditionally, those kind of things, um, end up being some local cost share. It's a degree to which it helps us not spend money or create problems on the interstate that we can back money into something that would help the locals. So I think there's opportunity for cost share on that.
Um, you had mentioned earlier that before anything else was to be done, you would have to go through the environmental impact statement process for an off-ramp. Would that be, would that also be true for an overpass?
Yeah, any, any improvement project, uh, in the state transportation improvement program has to have an environmental review. So that would be the same. The difference is, is that when you're looking at an overpass, it's a very isolated environmental impact traditionally. Whereas the ramp, because you start getting into a interchange network and your, and some other, the, the degree to which that can grow in terms of an environmental impact can be fairly, fairly significant.
Yeah.
It could be small, it's just, there's the opportunity for it to be much more significant.
As we have time here, is there anybody from the audience that have a question?
I do.
Yeah.
I work, uh, on the street department for Hudson, I work on some of the signal systems. Just a question on the Carmichael off-ramp when you're going, you know, coming eastbound. I've noticed, and it's been a problem for me in understanding this and making an answer, is that we'll probably have twenty, thirty, forty cars backed up on Carmichael Road and as soon as that first car gets a loop off coming off the off-ramp, off-ramp full, they get a green light and we got twenty, thirty, you know, cars backed up on Carmichael. Is there some way that we could get, um, a solution or different program that allows traffic to flow better on Carmichael Road or does the off-ramps have that much priority?
I'll answer your last question first, the answer is yes.
I'm, I'm just saying, one car will trip that thing and, you know, it will stop the traffic on Carmichael. It seems to me that there's a lot of, you could back more cars up and it still could save.
At, every day the technology opportunities for signal system increases, they can be so dynamic in terms of what they sense. And are you working with like Dave Fenske and Greg Helgeson out of our office or?
Jerry Tomis and some of those.
Sure, sure. Those are the guys, those are the guys that, you know, you keep communicating that with them, identifying these things to them and the sensitivity that we can build into that. We always will give priority to the interstate traffic to keep the interstate system free, but also it's, it's a degree to which we'll do that. If one car is tripping it and it's creating a level of service F, failure, backup on Carmichael, we're not gonna insist on, on predominance to the interstate to that degree. So that's the kind, it may be one of those situations where it's anticipating, it's in a peak hour timeframe and so as soon as it sees one car, it trips it before the backup starts and prevents the backup from going boom, 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 boom.
Could we have a survey or could we get together then and, uh, look at that issue? I think it's a big issue and I think it could have a pretty simple solution.
I know that this specific signal probably is in the top two of the signals that our, our office talks about. So you're certainly on our radar screen, so the degree to which you continually make those issues known to Jerry Tomis and Ed Clivig or the other, any of the ones you're talking to. But if you wanna have a more formal discussion, I'll certainly take that back and talk to Greg Helgeson and...
Water flows better downhill.
Well, may I ask, Tom, uh, we do have a traffic survey that is not very old for that intersection that the city paid for, I don't know if that's been forwarded to you or not, but that intersection, as Tom mentioned, it's not failing, but it gets a D. And, uh, it's, you know, on the verge of, of collapse or, of failure. Uh, have you seen that study? Cause we can get you a copy.
I don't know if I, I may have, I may have, so much stuff comes through the, through the, I don't know, do you recall that at all? It doesn't, doesn't surprise me though.
We did a study, uh, the first study that was done two or three years ago, uh, we'll talk about it later, but I, I'd just like you to know what, what our own studies show about our intersection there.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I, I would expect that you're showing level of service F for certain hours of the day.
Yeah.
At Carmichael and Crestview.
Yeah.
I would certainly expect that. Having driven that enough myself at three o'clock, four o'clock and it's really an issue of people trying to come out. I mean, I've seen the gridlock at Taco Bell and Quick Trip where you got, three different movements have stopped each other in that location, so that's clearly level of service F at that point in time.
Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Laurie?
You mentioned, uh, ten percent or less likely that this would be approved, but in the context of that, opening up the discussion, what do you think the likelihood ends of the thirteen street round would be? You know, even if we, even if we couldn't end this off-ramp, you mentioned opening up this discussion is gonna shed light on, on that.
They would all, it would all, that, part of the criteria for access would look at all the accesses and that one would be put right back into the spotlight at the federal highway level. We at our office are saying, no problems, no touch, let it stay there. But it's one of those things where when you bring open the discussion of looking at something new, the tendency is, okay, if we're gonna fix it this time, let's fix it right. And right by engineering term says, we're gonna go to manual thirteen dash five six and this is not standard, so that comes out. That's sort of the risk you run.
And I would just, I think it's a very significant risk and I know that that unram serves tremendous other people up on the hill.
Oh, we, we fought very, very hard for that and Tom helped us to keep that thing open. That was quite a few years back. Any other questions? If not, we really...
Jim and I have had conversations along with Greg Helgeson about a lot of these issues. We've kinda put off meeting the staff together until this discussion was held, but I think now it's...
Back in the...
Back on the front burner and having those discussions staff level. My concern is I don't have funds or I'm not a professional traffic engineer, I'll need to retain, uh, monies for some of those expertise, so, uh, try to bring back a proposal or something that this council can be for consideration or...
Go ahead.
Possibility of taking it out of the comprehensive plan fund, so...
Yeah. Or talk to us first to see if we can't find a way...
Help us out, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate very much you coming, Jim and Tom.
Last comment, just so you're aware, we do have some projects programmed out here. We are talking about, and I'll let Jim walk through those on the map, just talking about two minutes and we should be out of here, so you guys can...
Well, I didn't mean to cut you off, I thought you were done. Want to cut that lamp?
Probably the, in, right now the project is programmed for twenty-twelve, so that means that construction, that's our fiscal year, which starts in July, so what we're looking at doing is, um, I know Danny was aware, I don't know if anybody else, was we looked at the operations of the whole corridor, all the way back, um, through thirty-five south. Due to all the development that was taking place, uh, you know, on, along thirty-five, along twelve, along sixty-five, uh, we were watching the counts and noticing that they were going up quite a bit. As Tom mentioned, our incident management was becoming, uh, much trickier, we're not able to get out there in the day and do maintenance on the road anymore because it, because its backup set can go all the way back to Roberts. Um, and so we commissioned an operation study, uh, which identified what we needed to do to improve the operations on I-94 and it's a, kind of a unique segment in that the eastbound lanes, through here as Tom talked, we have four lanes here, there's the auxiliary lane that goes from here up to here, then we have three lanes, uh, through lanes that go through Highway twelve interchange and then we, and we drop the lane as it goes towards sixty-five. That's not the case on westbound. And that, starting at Highway twelve and continuing through thirty-five and then, and then just prior to here, there's a series of auxiliary lanes, we call them, similar to like this, that connects the interchanges but doesn't offer traffic of true third full lanes. So you actually only had two lanes in this direction and that's what was the problem was it was under capacity, that there's just too much traffic trying to get down through that bottleneck. So the project basically would take westbound and bring it up to the same level as eastbound and that would be to add a continuous through lane, uh, all the way, basically dropping and, you know, we'd have six lanes all the way out through twelve through here and then replacing those auxiliary lanes that exist between them because they are a critical function in that those interchange, when you get those closely spaced interchanges, as Tom was talking, you've got the weaving that takes place, those auxiliary lanes help alleviate some of that weaving and so it's, it's as much a safety issue as an operational issue. And so that would be to replace those auxiliary lanes over here. We really can't see a whole lot of the project because a lot is gonna take place to the east here, but it would continue all the way down through here. Uh, and one of the features would be to add a dual on-ramp from thirty-five south as the traffic comes up from River Falls, there's a single lane now that comes on, it would be to add a dual lane on because of the traffic that's coming that way and vice versa, we'd be putting a dual lane from ninety-four eastbound to thirty-five south. And that's basically the extent of the project, most of it's on the westbound traffic. Uh, right now we anticipate traffic control would be done by moving the existing traffic over onto the inside shoulder and then constructing the, the traffic, you know, the, the new lanes to the outside. One of the, probably the bigger impacts, uh, to the city would be in this area right here, I believe it is, it, it might be the one road that parallels between, um, thirty-five and Carmichael, but to get those, that width and here we need on our, on the interstate, we'll need to encroach on this road with it, the, the local road. And we're not gonna shut off the local road, but it may be narrowed up to accommodate that additional lane width we need on I-94.
When, when is that, uh, going to be completed?
It's scheduled to start in twenty-twelve, um, we're anticipating it would take about one construction season, it might carry over into the next.
Okay.
So you're looking at starting in, in twenty-twelve sometime and then probably ending in twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen.
Goal is is between, essentially between twenty-twelve and through, say, twenty-eighteen, adding full additional, for lack of a better term, you'll see one additional lane all the way from Labons interchange, all the way down through that slip ramp. You'll see one additional lane all the way from the Carmichael interchange, all the way back up through thirty-five and then also then up into the Labons interchange.
Gotcha.
That's what you're saying.
That's what you're needing.
That, that odd dropping and adding is really problematic, I'm surprised we don't have more crashes up there.
Just a question for Danny, so how much of that roadway in front of Plaza ninety-four do we lose then?
I don't, I mean, I can't answer any questions today.
It's not a significant amount, it's like four, maybe four feet, so it's... So it's still a workable service lane? Yeah, we looked at that and it was, it's not gonna restrict traffic movement through there. Okay. And is there any chance by doing this that they're gonna revisit that slip ramp that we like a lot?
Say again?
There's not any chance putting in this new lane is gonna... No. ...causing them to revisit. The operational study that was done to identify what needed to be constructed, looked at the slip ramp and from an operational issue, doesn't appear like it's gonna create any problems. Now, as Tom talked about, when you introduced the off-ramp, now, now you're gonna start taking a look at different parameters such as safety. Right. And this gentleman said there's a safety problem there. I should say problem, he said there's an issue. Yeah. If that starts to flag, that's, that's another reason Fred's gonna say, you gotta get it out, it's a safety problem.
I didn't say that then.
Anyway, we don't want to take any more of your time, we just, let's let you know there, there are other things that we've been working on, that we've finally have managed to get into the program, we're hopeful, start working on those in the next four or five years.
Well, I appreciate that. Well, I appreciate that very much, uh, Jim and Tom for coming.
Anytime.
Also, if you can remind your people to work with, uh, Mr. Zulley on that problem there. We appreciate it very much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Right. You bet.
We have copies of the presentation if any.
Hey, good. That's great. I was gonna ask for that.
Yes.
About eight copies of the.
Super. Danny, did you get one?
Appreciate it.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda. What do we got left here? Before we go into closed session, I think, um, I'd like to make an appointment to the Public Utility Commission. After some discussion with, um, the commission itself and in particular, the chairman, uh, he recommended that Tom Irwin be added to the Public Utility Commission. I'm making that, uh, request now and I need confirmation on that appointment.
Move.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. I think all we have left is a closed session. But, uh, before that, communications items for future agendas. Uh, any alter person?
I'd like to bring to attention of the business people in Hudson that just in time to coincide with our discussions of downtown improvement and a potential for a new tax increment funding district, an organization called the Regional Business Fund has unveiled a new loan program called Downtown Facade. And this loan program provides loans from five thousand to thirty thousand dollars, up to fifteen years duration for payback, and the interest rate is zero.
Wonderful.
So, uh, this would cover, um, outside renovations, signs, audience landscaping, exterior doors, graphics, uh, exterior windows. So, just at the time, we're talking about, uh, the possibility with our new, uh, code that we have, our new zoning for the V three business district, there is a way for people in businesses in that district to get interest-free loans to improve their facilities.
Excellent.
I'm, uh, working on an informational program scheduled for March twentieth for that program.
Oh, great.
Seven thirty AM. Hopefully, we just need confirmation of that particular day with the Regional, uh, Funding Commission. But we're trying to set up an informational meeting. So, um, property owners downtown and businesses, more and more about the program.
When is that date again?
Uh, we're trying to set it up for Thursday morning, March twentieth.
Okay. Any other alter person comments? City attorney? City administrator?
Couple items, just a reminder with, uh, April first election fast approaching. Anybody that has not registered to vote, we certainly would encourage you to do that down here at City Hall. That'll save you some time on Election Day. Um, we did finish up the census update with all the new addresses since two thousand. We added just under seventeen hundred units from the two thousand census. That'll be going on, being sent back to the Census Bureau for their input. So, um, that was a pretty big project, but we did finish that. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna go into closed session pursuant to nineteen eight five one C Wisconsin stats to discuss two thousand and eight compensation for the wastewater treatment plant superintendent.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Morsett?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Rodamacher?